All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM Tuesday, July 23rd. This City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me if you can, stand in for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the beauty of another day. Father, just get reminded every day through sickness and other things that how precious life is and how short it is. Help us to appreciate what's given to us, Father. Help us to be good stewards of what you put in front of us tonight. Guide our conversations and decisions that are before us, in your name and prayer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, roll call.
Councilmember Campson, here. Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Gosian.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Cindy Solomon.
Cindy, just make sure the mic's right there in front of you, please.
All right, good? All right, perfect. As proposed, my name is Cindy Solomon. My home is 130 Ocean Boulevard. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all this evening. Today, multiple beachfront homes on both the north and south side of IOP are vulnerable to devastating damage from any wind or tide event, and that includes the current full moon, as evidenced by the erosion it has caused over the last three days. By way of further example, at least seven blocks of homes on the south end have little or no dune remaining. Contrast that with 2018, before Hurricane Matthew, when there were several hundred feet of dunes in front of many of these same homes. It is my understanding that approximately 60 feet of beach was lost in that storm. We no longer have 60 feet to spare. It is not difficult to imagine the damage these blocks of homes face if even a tropical storm hits in the next four months, not to mention a hurricane. For at least the past year, the city has been aware of this novel erosion problem on the south end and worsening circumstances for these homeowners, despite the city's help via scraping, which is much appreciated. And for at least that long, the city has relied on assurances from the Army Corps that it would be coming soon, and although not a beach re-nourishment program, it would provide sand the city could use to start rebuilding those lost dunes. The further hope is that the additional sand would be enough to push the high waterline seaward and thus protects the beach, dunes, and homes. Up until a few weeks ago, most of us were under the understanding that the sand would arrive in June. However, it was recently communicated to the city that the Army Corps, though deployed in the area, will not start providing sand to IOP until at least, or at the earliest, October 2024. This change in circumstances puts the south end of the island in a dire position. Risk-benefit analysis regarding money, regulations, and protective measures have changed, and there now is an unanticipated urgency for decision-making and action. So I am here to ask council to approve and implement certain measures to help mitigate the situation. First, approximately 15 homes on the south end currently qualify for emergency measures under the SCDES regulations, prior, or OCRM. Under the SCDES guidelines, the city can provide and place sandbags in front of these homes, like it has done and is currently doing on the north end of the island. This can be done as an erosion control measure until the Army Corps sand arrives and the dunes are rebuilt. I'm asking the city to purchase and install sandbags, protect at least these homes. Unfortunately, sandbags are only so helpful. An experience last fall on the south end with a different type of sandbag was a fail, with these bags ending up broken, buried, and ineffective at protecting either beach or property. Thus, although I'm optimistic that these sandbags will be helpful, additional measures are still necessary.
Ms. Solomon, I'll need you to wrap your comments up, please.
Okay. So I am asking that we also employ the additional measure of enacting an emergency ordinance that would allow homeowners to install erosion control structures. These structures would be on the homeowner's property, hidden, buried, and invisible to the public. This ordinance should have a reasonable requirement. By way of information, I have been before the Board of DHEC in Columbia, along with an attorney and engineers familiar with these systems, to describe certain erosion control structures. This was in the context of having my setback line reestablished after the December storm and to comply with the original 60-day emergency erosion control ordinance. That ordinance expired before my setback was reestablished. The DHEC board, after learning what the structures were and how they worked, together with the knowledge some of them had from visiting IOP, excuse me, after December, was supportive of these structures, so much so, in fact, that the board mandated a mechanism for OCRM, now SDS, to reevaluate certain property owner's setback lines on IOP that had been marked in anticipation of installing erosion controls. The structure I'm specifically asking permission to install, and which was described to the DHEC board, will be feet away from my structure, so it will not infringe on any of the beach or affect turtles or wildlife. It will be a metal sheet that is vibrated down approximately 20 feet. No one will be able to see it as there, and if it is exposed due to a catastrophic storm, it will be covered again in sand. When the sand is brought to build a new dune system, this device, along with my home, will be yards away from the beginning of the dune, only there for protection in the case of a catastrophic event. This type of structure takes about two weeks to install, so time is of the essence to enact an emergency ordinance as we enter further into the storm season. I also wanted to point out that SCDS is aware that some of the most vulnerable homeowners would like to have both sandbags and an erosion control structure, and per a conversation yesterday, it understands the purpose of wanting to do both. So in summary, I am asking tonight that you authorize the use of Beach Fund, which has been collecting over a million dollars per year to pay for the placement of the sandbags to protect these vulnerable homes, and to vote for an emergency ordinance that will allow property owners to further protect their property by installing erosion control structures. The need for such protection is urgent. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry Hagerty?
I'm going to put my timer on so I can behave myself. I'm Henry Hagerty. I live at 2041st Avenue. Dun 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 dun. So we can laugh at Jaws, but this coyote thing has gotten real scary. I'm here for one thing today. In late May, and I didn't come last month because of COVID, be careful if you're around it, I was out on the beach at 41st, at 42nd, went on the beach with my dogs, been doing our morning thing. It was closer to dawn, which is unusual for me, but I took a bat.
Which thankfully are...
So I took a little plastic bat, silly little bat, and spray, right? I get out on the beach, and there's this really friendly German Shepherd, 90 pounds, following us halfway up. Looks like a really friendly dog. It's important to remember, friendly dog, looked like he wanted to go play with him. My dog blast off, and I go, that's a coyote. So the coyote then gets them, runs in, heading towards the bushes. For those of you who don't know, a typical coyote strategy is to lead, gets them to follow him or her into the bushes where the rest of the pack is ready to kill them. That's what they do. So this, my dogs are running in, they get to the dunes, and by some act of God, a God dog, my dogs turn, and they turn back. And one of them is 80 pounds. The coyote goes, no, not today, gets that big dog, teeth in her butt, so trying to cut her tendon, luckily gets higher. My dog's going down. I've got a plastic bat, and my little dog Turtle, little street dog, little wonderful, little tough thing, goes scootin' by me, 40 pounds, runs up, leaps in the air, all four feet in the air, and lands on that coyote and bites it on the muzzle. And the coyote is so surprised, it releases, the big dog gets behind me, turtle gets behind me. Now, I'm sitting with a bat and a 90-pound dog, right as far as where Blair is, looking at me, saying, I'm going to eat your dogs. So luckily, I did some praying. I said, if they're in the bushes, they're not coming out right now. I don't see them. I just started walking towards the dog with the bat and the coyote, and luckily, the coyote didn't know it was a plastic Nerf bat. Here's the problem. What happens when there's a little seven-year-old girl or boy, and their little poodle goes, oh, look, I'm going to go play with that dog. And as the coyotes are ripping that dog to pieces in the dunes, why wouldn't that little girl or boy run in to try and rescue their dog? There've already been issues on Sullivan's Island, where a mother was cornered with a baby stroller by coyotes. So there we go. I got 15 more seconds, if I can turn that off. Please kill these things, okay? They don't belong here. They, they were, there was an experiment where I think they brought them to get rid of the deer problem on Sullivan's 20, 30 years ago, if I remember, and there were a lot of ways. I've talked to Chief Cornet, I've talked to different people about it. It's like, there are ways to do it. We have lots of residents who are great bow hunters and turkey hunters. If it's not going to be local, get someone out. I'm sure there's hundreds of volunteers who will seal off three or four exits, go in, scope them, and if you've got to take them out with tranquilizers and kill them, euthanize is a nice word, kill them off island, fine. If somebody really likes the coyote, they can take it and relocate it 20, you know, 100 miles away from here. These dogs are killers. My dog, these coyotes are killers. My dog almost died, and only by the act of this crazy little puppy did I get to see her make it out. I haven't been to the beach in two months with my dogs, and I'm not gonna. This is the important part. The dogs will lure, the coyotes will, they're wily, that's just like the cartoon. Dogs will, my dogs, if they see that again, are going to charge it because they just, they got to go after it. So it's not just like, hold your dogs. It's like, that's what the coyotes do. So I think they've taken out 14 on Sullivan's. Just consider another way that is more effective because they are not warm and fuzzy, and they look like it.
Mr. Hagerty.
But they will kill your dog. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. You've got the regular City Council meeting on June 24th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any edits, changes, or comments to that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You also have committee meeting minutes attached to the package for your review. Next item is old business discussion of emergency conditions on the 20 block of Ocean Boulevard due to beach erosion and consideration of options. Desreye or Stephen?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In light of the recent news that we heard from the Army Corps of Engineers, where their schedule for the big, to start pumping sand on the south end of the island has been delayed until late September, early October, we've asked Stephen to present to you all a overview and an assessment of the current conditions on the south end, and we can discuss some options that we can, that we can consider, City Council can consider, to address the emergency situation that we have there, knowing that we were probably going to be majority of the hurricane season without any additional sand from the project, and knowing the condition that they are today. So let Stephen present some updated images. He flew the drone today, so you'll be seeing what it's out there today. We do that almost every week, and answer any questions, and we can discuss, again, what options we have for consideration.
Good. Stephen, thank you for joining us again.
Always glad to hear several different updates, and I'll hit the button to the island. But as Desreye said, the core project, which we were told was going to start placing sand on Isle of Palms, they elected, due to water in the borrowed areas that they're going to use, there was one that was particularly dry, which wouldn't allow them to start working earlier, and that one was designated for Sullivan's Island. So that we'll be placing sand at Sullivan's Island first, while they are de-watering and clearing the areas that are designated for Isle of Palms. So based off their most updated schedule, they are hopeful for late September to start placing sand. I would anticipate, you know, a little more time than that, because I think that's a fairly optimistic schedule, so probably in October, we would start seeing sand over at Isle of Palms. As several, has happened every time with this project, you know, additional delays could probably be expected. And that, you know, as we've been trying to deal with the erosion issue on the south end, we've kind of always been trying to get to this project, and the project keeps just getting out ahead of us. So that's, at this point, with hurricane season being, approaching the peak of it in September and October, it may want to change what we would do over the next couple of months, and that would really be a council decision. We did go through the bid process for doing the supplemental work that we are looking at, restoring the dune along the entire south end up to 10th Avenue. The permits are out for that. We should have those in hand fairly soon, but we do have a bid that is a reasonable bid to do dune restoration. And just to remind you, we were looking at restoring the dune along the area north of 4th Avenue, which was erosional, but has been pretty stable, and actually we're seeing a lot of natural dune recovery in that area. But if we weren't to restore it, you know, by machines, it would probably take at least a year, if not two years, to fully restore itself naturally, provided that we do continue to have stability in that area north of 4th. South of 4th, we were going to do dune restoration, but also look at moving sand and placing it in the area south of where the core is going to be working. The core will start working at 2nd Avenue, and at the time we were looking at this project, knowing that the core wasn't going to be placing sand south of 2nd Avenue, we were looking at moving a significant quantity to try to restore some of the dry sand beach in that area. Unfortunately, that area has actually gained a lot of sand naturally in recent months, so that may reduce the amount of sand that we need to put there to get the, to get a, you know, a stable dune and a pretty wide-side dry sand beach. But until that project actually starts, we want to be as flexible as possible with that. It's not me, any time, if you have questions on that, but we'll go back to the south end in a second. Up at the north end or the east end, the shoal management project, that permit is out on public notice as of this morning, so that's a 30-day public comment period for that. And just to remind everybody that we did exclude the potential harvest area between 44th Avenue and 53rd Avenue for this permit application. So right now, this permit is restricted to harvesting sand from the attaching shoal in the beach just on the landward side of the shoal. So that is out now and going through the permitting process. Based off of the photos, which we, these were just taken a couple hours ago, the shoal is nearing the beach just off of the property owner's beach house, but there's an extensive amount of sand that's extending to the south in front of the Western Beach Club Villas and into Dune Crest Lane and the east side of Beachwood East. It's a very favorable condition as far as how the shoal's attaching. Over the next 12 to 18 months, I expect a lot of sand to attach to the beach and start natural recovery, but there is a gap in the shoal that if you look on that right picture at the top of it, you can see kind of a break in the waves there, and that's where some of the focused erosion's been, is through that break. So at the south end of Beachwood East, right now, we're seeing some more erosion. Right now, the earliest possible shoal management project would be probably in early 2025, if the permit moves through pretty quickly.
And Stephen, what would that, what would, exactly what do you?
Exactly what would occur there? You'd get sand and connect the shoal with sand? I mean, essentially?
Yeah, the shoal at that point will likely be connected to the beach, so we would take equipment out to the far extents of the shoal that we can get to at low tide, excavate material, put it in trucks, and then place it along the most erosional areas of the beach. And really, that's what nature is going to do, but it may take nature two or three years to get that. So trying to manage the hotspot erosion by accelerating that natural process, you know, there's a chance that over the next couple of months, we'll see some improvement in certain areas, but we may see additional erosion in some areas. So we would want to look at the condition, you know, at that time to see, you know, how much quantity would we need to move to provide an effective project that gave, you know, a dune and a dry sand beach that's able to withstand whatever erosion we would anticipate happening until this process is really kind of complete. And that may include placement, you know, further east around Ocean Club, which right now is, is healthy, but is vulnerable to additional erosion.
And Stephen, so the public comments through the end of August, what's your estimate on the permit approval? I mean, that's months, not?
Correct. It's months. I would hope, you know, around the new year, we would have that permit, and, you know, we'll try to work closely with the agencies to keep on a timeline that if, if we know it's going to be a little later with the permit, maybe we can go ahead through our bid process in anticipation of a permit, and as soon as that's in hand, you know, be able to pull the trigger on implementing it.
So that's your early 2025 best guess now?
Yes.
Yeah.
The other thing we're doing is, in that original area, we have sandbags that we installed early in the year. They've held up pretty well. That, that area's, it kind of stabilized, never really grew a lot, but was fairly stable for the past few months. But over the past week, we have had some additional erosion, so we're adding 100 additional sandbags to fill in some of the low areas and do a little maintenance of that area, because we know until that shoal project or we have that natural recovery, that's still going to be a hotspot, and those properties are going to be vulnerable. So those bags should start coming in this week. And so back to the south end, just kind of generally speaking, as we've watched this area over the past year, the area north of 4th, we had a, some, a lot of erosion of the dune, but after that erosion, the beach really did kind of stabilize. We saw a lot of dry sand beach that's still existed through these high tides. We're seeing a lot of windblown sand accumulating at the toe of the dune, so you're seeing some elevation starting to grow. So north of 4th, we're in pretty good condition. But you're not, like I said earlier, you're not going to get natural dune recovery that quickly. It's going to take a couple of, a year or two to get, to gain back what was lost, or possibly more. So as part of the supplemental project with the core, we're looking at rebuilding that dune and putting up sand fence and vegetation to kind of get us back to where we were, or pretty close to it. Around the 200 block and extending into the 300 block and a little bit into the 100 block, has really been the focus of erosion the past month or two, and it's been very mild, but mild over the period of two months. You're starting, you know, you get back to the critical areas in certain properties, and it may be one property one day, two properties a couple of days later. So we've been doing some sand scraping to try to keep some protection in front of those houses as those erosion conditions continue. But, and Doug can confirm with me here, it seems like the past week to two weeks, it's, it's expanding a little bit, and it seemed like we're having to do a little bit more scraping than we were the prior month. So we're, that area's been the hotspot south of 2nd Avenue. We've seen a lot of sand accumulating, even around the corner to Breach Inlet. While it's not all the way up at the dry sand beach, it's pretty high in the intertidal profile, so that area, I'm pretty optimistic, will be recovering fairly soon. But it's still an area, you know, that we want to watch. So the options for...
Steve, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
When you talked about the dune, creating the dune, how much of the 550,000 cubic yards can you estimate that you would be pushing up to create dune along that stretch?
Yeah, we were looking at about 20,000 yards would be necessary to build a six-foot-tall, 20-foot-wide dune, and that would go from the 2nd Avenue up to 10th Avenue, plus the sand fence and vegetation. We had originally planned about 30,000 yards would be shifted from where the core places it to that erosional area south of 2nd Avenue, but that's where we've seen a lot of recovery. And if I had to guess, there's probably more than 30,000 yards accumulated there already. Not suggesting we shouldn't do any work there, but we'll want to look at the conditions close to the time and kind of pick a number of what we feel like is necessary to kind of get everybody on a very healthy condition. But of the 500,000, we're only looking at, you know, artificially moving about 10% of that.
And Stephen, real quick, you know, I think you're going to get to it through this, but if you don't, just be sure to make the comment. I see the 20-foot line, because I know residents up and down, you know, the coast here and wild dunes, you know, want to do something, but all of our hands are tied to some extent, that we can't just truck sand in when we want to or put sandbags in. So just be sure you weave that in as you go through here.
Sure. And just to kind of remind everybody, the state allows for emergency work when properties are within 20 feet of the high tide line. And that emergency work includes scraping the beach, installation of sandbags, or trucking in sand. There was a very recent change in the regulations that allows the state some flexibility to go beyond that 20-foot criteria for circumstances where basically logistics make it make sense to do that. So if you have, you know, two or three properties in a line, and then there's one house that's a little, that doesn't meet the criteria, but then additional ones that do, they want the flexibility to allow you to continue, to have continuous protection across that lot. So for some circumstances like that, they have a little bit more flexibility now. So, but that's the only thing that, you know, the emergency measures allow. We have done some, we've done a little bit of all of that at the south end. We've trucked in sand. I think we've trucked in about 16,000 yards of sand. We did super sack sandbags before that were heavily impacted by a storm, but also that was in our most severe erosion cycle, so they did not perform very well through those conditions. The type of bags that we used at the east end seem to be doing much better. They're also much more expensive, but they hold up much better in the UV and don't roll around near as much as the super sacks do. So those are the ones that we would suggest if we're doing, you know, considering any bags at the south end.
Are there any different rules for trucking in sand? I thought there, I thought Douglas, we were talking about some different looser regulations.
There is a general permit that would allow any property owner to truck in sand for minor dune nourishment, so...
Without the 20-foot stipulation?
Without, yeah, without the 20-foot criteria. So any property owner or, you know, entity could apply for a general permit, which is a fairly easy process. But you can truck in beach-compatible material for, you know, adding sand to the dune system.
Regardless of how much you have in front of you?
Correct. So for the south end, knowing that the core project is, you know, several months away now, we can continue to scrape. We can hope that the beach condition, again, there's a lot of healthy sand in there, there's a lot of sand in that system, but we do have this erosion hotspot. We can keep trying to, you know, whack a mullet with, you know, looking at what house is meeting the criteria today and trying to scrape some sand. We could potentially truck in sand, but trucking in is just very expensive. It's, you know, $40 a yard to do that. And that was very effective when we were super erosional. Maybe more effective right now because we're not as erosional, but, you know, it could be a limited lifespan. Sandbags certainly can offer the best protection as we go into the storm season. They will look better, and you can kind of get a little bit better guaranteed protection, but certainly with a significant storm, something like a Matthew, you know, there's not really guaranteed protection with sandbags either, because wave energy like that will move any type of sandbag revement. You know, you can double layer, and that offers even more protection. So, you know, you can try to protect with that, but, you know, it's kind of up the council to decide what level of protection you're trying to obtain there. What we've done at the east end's worked pretty well through some, you know, modest storm events and nor'easters and, you know, pretty corroded condition, and that was four bags, and now we're adding one more layer. So I'll show an example of some scenarios with four bags there. And as I mentioned, the changes in regulation do allow us a little bit more flexibility. So rather than addressing individual properties, we can address it a little bit more regionally, which does make sense. But you can approach it as a continuous revement or individual properties. You know, a continuous revement is better, a better structure. It prevents flanking erosion and bags, you know, falling off the side and water getting around bags. But individual properties do benefit, even if they are by themselves with bags. To implement bags, you're looking at probably two to three weeks to start from the time you, you know, give a contractor a go-ahead to get them manufactured, delivered, filled, and starting to be placed.
Stephen, would there be any benefit on the, on the bag option, since we have it already up at the north end, north end of the island, to just do it, if we were to approve that option, to just have a continuous flow and maybe shorten some of that, if we went with that contractor, per se?
Yes. I know they are filling bags now, so you would, you know, eliminate the potential for a separate contractor having to mobilize, you know, new equipment, new personnel, have a, a learning curve on how to utilize these bags, you know, the right way, and sew them up and that type of thing.
And they're using the more resilient structures?
Yes.
And Stephen, sorry, Scott.
No, that's all I'm, I'm good.
Backup one, if you don't mind. The two to three week, you know, we all look at our experience up at Beachwood. I mean, we've been waiting on these extra 100 bags for two to three weeks. I mean, is that, I want to be optimistic too, but I'm guessing we're end of August at best before we place a bag on the, on the beach.
It's possible. I spoke with the manufacturer yesterday, actually today. If we gave them notice tomorrow, then they said they could start manufacturing about 50 bags per day. I would probably give them a two or three day, at time to even start. But you could start rolling them in in increments, you know, 200 bags at a time, but that's, earliest start, I think, is potentially three weeks. But you're completely right. It could be, you know, four weeks before we actually start seeing bags on the beach. seeing bags on the beach. And that's whether, you know, the city does anything or whether it's an individual owner for that type of bag, you're going to have that lead time. If you're going back with a super sack, they're more readily available and you may get them in, you know, starting a week from now.
And Stephen, the recent further delay at Beachwood East has been due to issues with the sewing machine that needs to be used to seal these bags. And the contractor that we have that we're using currently is even considering buying that piece of equipment and not have to rely on the manufacturer sending that. So we had a long conversation with them today and feel fairly confident that that two, three-week time period could be realistic. Obviously, we know things happen, but I think they've done it a couple of times now that they understand what the challenges have been and how to mitigate them.
Yes, I think there are also some other delays with the manufacturer was out of the country for a week when we made the original order and there was some delays in that side. But to get to my last slide here, the couple of scenarios that I outlined and the, a continuous revetment, currently the erosional area that I think you could go to the state and say this is, you know, are 20 feet plus a reasonable area adjacent to that that, you know, is vulnerable. Covers about 13 properties from 130 Ocean to 304 Ocean. That's about 1,200 linear feet. There is one property there that has not issued the city an easement, so we wouldn't have permission to do anything in front of their house as it stands today. But for a four-row revetment, you know, you're looking at about 360K for that. If you were to look at just the properties that are actually within 20 feet where scraping has been taking place recently, there are about five properties that exist today, and you can see the difference. That's from 800 bags to 287 bags at a cost of about 129K. So there's certainly anywhere in the middle of that or, you know, possibly extending either way is an option, but just wanted to kind of present, you know, different scenarios for the council to...
And I think I asked this at the meeting, is that in and out?
That is just the cost for installation. It does not cover the cost of a bond that if the city was, the permatee would have to place. Removal is probably 10% of the cost.
And we'd save some money potentially from scraping?
Right. Once the sandbag revetment was in place, you would not do any more beach scraping.
We are averaging about, I would say between $30,000 and $50,000 a month on scraping, depending how often we have to do it. I think we would anticipate having to do it very frequently just because these, the dune, it's not staying after a high tide. So it's difficult to, you know, give you an exact number of how much that would cost, but roughly, that's what you would be looking for.
So we could get anywhere between 50 to 150 in savings off of that by depending upon if it was one month, three months at 50 grand. Yeah, okay.
Stephen, I'm sorry, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Is there any, you mentioned the removal process. Is there any possibility of salvaging any of these bags to relocate to different stretches that could use them?
It's something we've thought about. Now, I have not thought about relocating them to the east end, which is probably more feasible than emptying them and storing them for reuse later. But this material, it could potentially be feasible to empty them, store them, and then have them available for future use. You would have to look at how much effort does a contractor have to put into doing that as opposed to just ripping them out and throwing them away if it ends up costing them, you know, the significant amount of time to try to salvage them and get better off just starting with the material. But relocating them to other eroded areas, just kind of putting them on a trailer, moving them down the beach is, could certainly be feasible.
John.
So I just want to clarify the cost again, but the cost of putting in for the option of a full sandbag revetment would be $400,000 roughly to get bags installed and removed. And then there'd be an upside savings of anything we save on scraping, right?
Correct.
So the net cost is somewhere less than $400,000.
Yes.
I think that there's a question I had, and we've talked about this before, but don't remember what you told me. The, so you already mentioned that there's a property there without an easement, so that would create a break, if you will, on the revetment. And also, there is an empty lot right beside 132 Ocean. Do we know whether the state would approve the placement of sandbags there with the goal of having a continuous line?
I think they would. I think that's kind of the perfect scenario for the state's leeway. And they've allowed us to scrape sand.
Scrape.
To maintain a dune, so, and I think they did when we did the original bags, they allowed us to put the trucks there.
Jimmy.
Well, the underlying big question that I have is, and I imagine a lot of people are wondering, if you go back and briefly review the timeline, if I remember correctly, this, all this was supposed to be done by the Corps of Engineers in early spring.
You go enough back, it was last fall.
Okay, well, I'm trying to give everybody the benefit of the doubt, but last fall, and so now we're saying late this fall. And I'm just wondering, if there's anybody that's above the Core that can hold them accountable, how do we know it's not going to be another big delay?
You know, that's why...
We just, all we've done is just been put off and put off and put off and have never had a clear answer. We're just kind of at the mercy and the city's having to spend millions of dollars. And I'd just like to know if we can get assurances from someone that they're really coming.
Yeah, unfortunately, I understand that completely, and that's why, you know, I'm saying that the sandbags are a reasonable investment right now because I'm not, it's what we would recommend outside of, you know, trying to get a permit, which will take 12 months to do some type of larger-scale project, you know, it's your best option for long-term protection right now. So essentially, it assumes that, you know, the Core's not going to be there anytime in the next six months.
But the sandbags failed before because we had a big wastor, is that right?
Different kind.
It was a different kind of bag. We also...
It's a big bag, right?
It was the tall 1 cubic yard, you know, three-by-three bags.
But these we're talking about are flatter and better stacking and more durable.
Well, I think, Jimmy, to your point, we made that decision to go with the less expensive bags because we had anticipated that they were going to be here in the spring.
That's right.
And, you know, in their defense, they've made it very clear to us along the way that this is not a re-nourishment project. This is them clearing out spoils to make room for new spoils.
It is a project that will provide almost half a million cubic yards of sand, which is substantial. That sand is 90%, I believe, based on the testing that's been done, that's beach-compatible. It's equal to about $10 million project. And Councilmember Ward, to your question about timing, the contract that was issued by the Core to Ottenham has a completion date of January 2025, and we know that they, you know, we've seen them, they are working. Stephen had some shots of the work that they're doing, clearing the areas along the intercoastal. So they are here. At least we know that they are working, whether it'll be September, October, or November, you know, there is an end inside. There is a moment where they'll be coming, barring anything, you know, extraordinary happening. But I think at least we see them onsite, deployed, and actively working on the site.
Well, you can understand from the past performance, past, recent past history, the frustrations of people, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, we're literally left owning the bag.
Literally.
You know?
We have communicated that to the Core, you know, just for them to understand the position that we're in. You know, our residents are calling us and asking us questions that we cannot answer, so we have been requesting from them more and frequent communication so that we can mitigate some of those concerns. But I think that this is an example, when a project is out of your hands, the city's, the contractor does not respond to the city because we're not under, they're not under contract with us, so it's just a general challenge.
Right. Well, I know this is all about the details and everything, and I hope I haven't wasted anybody's time, but a lot of people are really concerned about the big picture, and that's why I brought it up, and I appreciate you indulging my questions.
And Jimmy, just keep that in mind. One of the things the Beach Ad-Hoc Committee is looking at, you know, Folly, Paulies, others are federally managed beach, and you enter into a 50-year contract, you have to have easements from everybody. I mean, the feedback we get, and Stephen can attest to this too, I won't put you on the spot, but the feedback we get from Folly and others is, this is life with the Core. Totally out of your control, move exceptionally slow, and it just is what it is. I mean, I've had a couple of, I've had the highest civilian person at the Core conversation about, you know, lack of communication and just the lack of effort that's been there, and we've all been sitting here waiting for months on this thing. Desiree's had similar conversations with the project manager and project leader of it, so doing what we can. Elizabeth and then John.
Stephen, you mentioned earlier that part of our plan, once the sand does get here, is to move, I think you said, either 16,000 to 20,000 yards to rebuild the dune. Is that something we should be considering now? Or, I mean, what if, I mean, I realize it's, what, $800,000, $40 a yard? I mean, should we, is that something we should be considering to just move forward, trucking in sand and rebuilding the dune? Or are the sandbags a better option?
I think in the, leading up to the storm season, I think the sandbags are a more guaranteed option.
Okay, thank you.
There's just a risk of placing a dune and two weeks later.
John.
I just had a question about the one homeowner that didn't sign the waiver or whatever it was. Could they do that themselves, though? Did they put sandbags in themselves?
Yes, they can.
And whatever the OCRM is now, they would be able to grant that permit?
Yes, sir. They would be required to request an emergency order or permit from the state, hire their own contractor, and place the sandbags.
Okay.
And Stephen, in your example here, the red is the full sandbag revetment, just for obvious illustration purposes. And the other, the yellow is the...
Two yellow areas.
Hotspot properties with the gap for the non-signee.
Correct. And if you were to kind of take the hotspot approach, you would want to kind of have the understanding that that may change, you know, in a couple of weeks from now when we may start filling it, have to fill in some other areas.
When you were, when you were, is this one? When you were saying that, you were asking about the lot and that we could get, you felt like they would give us clearance to get in front of the lot, were they also going to give us clearance to get in front of the house that didn't dissipate in the easement execution?
I think the state would. It would be up to the city and, you know, the attorney to say, we want to do that just because it opens up, you know, liability and things like that. So that's why we haven't done work there.
Yeah, we would prefer that that owner obtains their own permit so that in the event that the work is not done in accordance with the permit conditions, the city is not liable or held in violation with the state. So we would be requesting permission for just those locations that we're authorized to work on.
Stephen, anything else from your...
I'd say we did consider the idea of the city being the entity that obtained the permit and then letting individual owners, you know, respond as they see fit under that permit. But after talking with the state, it really did open up a lot of different kind of legal questions and liability issues. You know, if a property owner didn't install them correctly, you know, who's going to be responsible for fixing it or removing them? So it really does need to either be an individual effort or, you know, kind of more of a comprehensive city effort, one or the other.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with a full sandbag revetment from properties from 130 to 304 Ocean, and it would be paid for out of our beach nourishment fund.
I'll second that.
I would like to make one more comment. This is assuming, and we've spoken with the contractor that's done it, that they are willing to do this again. The city certainly has the option for, you know, requesting quotes and going through that. It just may delay the...
I would recommend that the motion include an emergency contract, an emergency approval, so that we are exempt from the procurement process and allows us to place the order tomorrow. We would be using the same contractor that is currently using installing sandbags at Beachwood East, who we obtained through a competitive bid process. So we would be using the lower bid for that project, so it would technically be done as a change order to that existing contract. We have about $600,000 left from the total fund that council approved last year. So we have some invoices that are coming in for this scraping in the past couple of months, but we believe that that would be enough to cover the $400,000 effort.
I'll change my motion and add that.
You said that the contractor was available?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll change my motion and add your recommendations.
I will continue to second it.
Nicole, are you good? Mostly.
Not really.
We got video, we got tape, all good. Desiree, Douglas, anything else on that?
No, we, just before you vote, I guess, the question about trucking in sand, the permit that the city obtained last summer to truck in sand that we use expired this month, so we're going through the process with the Bureau of Coastal Management, VCM, to renew that, and that would be available to any, we're not only renewing the original area, which was Breach Inlet through 314, which was the area that was highly erosional earlier last year, but extending that up to 10th or 9th?
914.
914. So that would be available for property owners to do at their expense if they want to.
Truck in sand?
Yes, sir.
And they can come through Fifth or Breach to do that?
We would coordinate the access in accordance with the state regulations, so that's in process. It's already been submitted to the state and they're reviewing it.
And is that a fairly quick approval? Sorry, Douglas, go ahead.
Well, I would just add to that, the, kind of the complexity of that permit being in the city's name, people working under the city's permit, same exact scenario whereby we need to be coordinated with any homeowner that wants to do that. There is a beach compatibility process of ensuring that the sand is compatible. We need to coordinate the accesses, there's turtle issues. So we don't want owners just going out and doing it, assuming that they're covered. They need to, there still is a coordination effort, but they would do that through our offices.
Other questions or discussion from council? And Elizabeth, I think to your question, you know, about going ahead and building the dune, I mean, this is the circular conversation we've been having for a year, the cost-benefit. What's the right thing to do, Scott? You know, to your point, we might have made, we definitely would have made a different decision on the bags we used earlier if we would have known, you know, what was coming before us for the next few months. But, you know, when somebody's getting ready to give us $10 million worth of sand, you know, to spend our money to go, again, I know it's just a circular conversation we've had for months now, and it's very frustrating on everybody's part, homeowners, council, staff, Stephen, because we're all in the firing line, and it's just, it's a hard spot to be in when it's not in your control. So we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I know, I don't think we need to suspend the rules of order for this. Stephen has another commitment that he needs to run out to, but this is kind of in conjunction with the emergency ordinance that we have coming up later in the agenda.
Can you tell me on one curiosity question for Stephen? Back on, I didn't want to interrupt the south conversation, but back on the north, it sounds like we're going to have the public hearing and comment done by August or 8/23 here. And this is just curiosity, why does it take six or seven or eight months to get a decision? I remember when we were up at our conference up in Myrtle Beach recently, I think the agency had committed to try to shorten their decision process to 60 days or something like that. I mean, are there that many, are there that many requests to queue? Is it just bureaucracy? I mean, I'm sure this is probably a crazy government question, but it just boggles my mind that it would take that long when we've got such a situation.
Scott, that's not rhetorical, right? That's a real question.
I mean, there's a room for...
Is there anything we can do to, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, it's all the above. There's a couple of windows, like Fish and Wildlife Service has 120 days to put together a biological opinion following the public notice. They tried to get that out beforehand, but they have that long. The state is usually pretty good about moving things forward quickly. The core regulatory side, which is completely separate from the side that's doing this project down here, tends to take a little while longer because they're working with NOAA, Marine Fisheries Service, Fish and Wildlife, DNR, a lot of different groups, and it's just a slow process. Honestly, if we can get it in six months, that's pretty good for these type permits. Hopefully it will help that it's not, that it's been done before and it's essentially a very similar permit as we did in 2010. So hopefully that'll push things through. And we've already, you know, had meetings with them and they're well-informed of it, so they're, we've tried to address all the controversy of it that, you know, would slow things down.
And Scott, I think to your point, if we get lucky and it comes faster, we've got the bid in hand and the contractors, I mean, I think we can move as fast as...
Well, we haven't bid this project. The bid we have is for the south end.
Got it.
We would rebid this project.
Sorry. Sorry.
I do want to say publicly how great the staff from, from OCRM has been. They, they understand the urgency and the situation that we have, and I do want to, do want to...
Take your word for that, Desiree.
I, I will say, they, they've been fantastic to work with.
Good. And Steven, I think a lot of that's on you, with the relationship you've had with them. So thank you on our behalf. Other questions? I know we've got the sixty-day emergency ordinance that we'll talk about later, and Steven needs to go, but questions that really may be for Mac as we get to that, as opposed to Steven, but anything for Steven that you may have around that, that you want to ask while we got him. Steven's got to fly to, to Edisto.
I wonder if we ought to talk about it now?
Well, I don't, I mean, we can. I don't, Steven's not a civil engineer, so I don't know if he's going to be able to opine much on, on the ordinance, but Steven, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You may can get to Edisto, I don't know. Seven thirty, right?
Just go upstairs.
Telephonic.
Yes, I'll pay rent.
I think you'll make it. Thank you. Good conversation. Thank you all. Next item, new business discussion and consideration of a six-month extension with existing bulk services collector, collection provider, Carolina Waste and Recycling for commercial garbage collection and discussion regarding future policy related to commercial garbage collection. This one's had a lot of conversation coming out of the Public Services and Facilities Committee. Desiree, why don't we kind of set the stage, if you don't mind, before we take any action on this particular item?
Sure.
Please.
Amy, if you, can you give me, where's it on there? There you go. All right, yeah. We had this conversation with, like you said, Mayor, with the Public Services and Facilities Committee last week, or maybe two weeks ago. And I think it's, it's good to get a grounding understanding of what we're talking about, because I think even, even the users have questions about what they're paying or not paying, what the city has been paying, what they've been paying. So commercial bulk container collection is, it happens on the island. Businesses have to pay, residential and commercial entities have to pay the county a solid waste user fee. And this is the principal funding source for the county's solid waste management program. So basically, you use the landfill, you pay to use that. Residents, if you own a single family or a multifamily, you pay in your property tax bill a hundred and fifty dollars or a hundred and five dollars. And that's billed to you directly through, through your tax bill. For commercial applications, they're, they are billed directly to the business, and it's based on the prior year's volume as reported by the hauler. So they look at how much you generated and how much was, was transported to the landfill, and they use a two hundred and sixty dollar per cubic yard of garbage. So that's paid to Charleston County. The city doesn't receive any money from, from that payment. Then there is the garbage collection service fee. So that is the fee that the city has historically been paying for the actual collection. And we pay it to a vendor, a contractor, and they collect all the bulk containers on the island that's used by businesses and condos. And it's based on a price per cubic yard, and based, and that's essentially based on volume and the frequency of collection.
And Desiree, this practice has been as far back as anybody can pull records, I'm guessing. I mean, I know at least twenty years we've been, city's been paying this...
Correct. It's been a long, long, long time that the city has been doing. We think, based on just word of mouth or historical chatter, that it has been happening since before Hugo or after, right after Hugo, as an effort to help businesses. Councilmember Ward may remember from, from back in the day. But yes, it's been, it's been a long, a long exercise. We are not aware of any other municipality that pays for the garbage collections, collection service. So right now, everybody pays the user fee. We are paying the collection service fee. Then we also have the municipal compactor. Y'all know, last year, we spent about a hundred thousand dollars in renovating and beautifying that area, installing odor control systems, installing a new security gate, a new concrete box to address the rat issues that we were, our, our businesses were experiencing. So that is owned by the city. And the city, years ago, provided space in its municipal parking lot to accommodate a compactor to be used by front beach businesses that don't have the space to install their own bulk container. So right now, that container is, that compactor is used by about ten front beach businesses. The city is, because it's owned by the city, and the city has been paying its, the collection fee across the board for every business and condo on the island, also received, and it's owned by the city, the city receives that user fee that we talked about earlier, that it's collected by the county. The city receives that. And we have a formula by which we distribute that cost of the user fee to the businesses. So everybody pays a user fee. Those in particular, because it's a compactor that's owned by the city, they reimburse the city after we pay the county, the county bill, when we receive it from the county. That user fee is split among the businesses that use the municipal compactor. There's a formula that's been developed over time that takes into consideration the size of the, of the establishment, the frequency and, and type of use. Per the city code currently, it establishes that businesses that generate more than two ninety-gallon containers may be required to use a bulk container. So if you're a business or an office, and you can manage your trash in two ninety-gallon containers within the current schedule for collection, the city will collect that as part of our garbage collection that our crews collect once a week and twice a week in the summer.
Is that a standard trash can size?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no concept of what line of...
Yes, ma'am. So if a business or an office, again, or a single family can, can manage with two, we will collect that. But the reality is, none of our businesses can manage that little garbage collection in, in that frequency. Again, once a week during the off-season and twice a week. But if they do, we would collect it. I think maybe this is repetitive, but the current vendor increased the price from approximately seventy-five cents per yard to three dollars starting June first. So that elevated our costs from about seventy-five thousand dollars to over a quarter of a million dollars a year. The city has been paying for this for decades. We believe it started after Hugo. We're not aware of any other municipality in the state that pays for bulk container for businesses. As you all can expect, the, the cost not only has increased, but also the volume and the frequency of collection. We used to go, I think years ago, the volume was about seventy thousand cubic yards of, of, I was going to say sand, of garbage.
New topic.
Shift to about over, over ninety, ninety-five thousand cubic yards of, of the garbage. So just the activity on the island has gone up. Most of these businesses now require multiple collections during the week, and that obviously is translated to, to the cost. I included a, an exhibit in the packet that shows the entire detail of all the cans that the city collects, and they are categorized between condominiums and the businesses. The size of the can, the frequency of collection, and the frequency of collection, the size, the yards, and an, and an estimated monthly cost that, that the collection would cost the city. So here, I just included the businesses, not the condos, just so that you have an idea, and in a more consolidated way, because some of these have multiple cans of different sizes, so they're shown multiple times on that exhibit. So this essentially shows, and then they're, I think they're listed by, on alphabetical order. But those are the businesses that the city currently collects, and the new monthly cost if we continue to collect garbage for these businesses at the, at the higher rate. Questions have been asked about what the city uses to cover this cost. As you know, the city collects two percent of all prepared food and beverages, beverage sales on the island, and that generates about a million three, which is about four percent of our total city revenues for FY25 budget. And these funds are used to support city services that benefit our commercial businesses. And they include, you know, police and fire. We, we purchase emergency vehicles for police and fire from this fund in FY25. This is specific to FY25, but it's very similar over time, the kind of expenses and operations that the city funds using hospitality tax fund. Body worn cameras for our police officers, vehicle cameras for them as well, equipment for our beach service officers, which as you all know, are now dedicated to be on the beach for enforcement and additional safety, public safety. The drone, in part, is being covered by a portion of the hospitality tax fund. Public works, we cover the cost of the citywide landscaping. Most of the landscaping that's not on the island is on front beach. So that's covered. Street sweeping, all on Ocean Boulevard, the connector and Palm Boulevard is covered through hospitality tax fund. There is about three or four events that are, that are held on front beach during the off-season to attract visitors to the area. We also cover maintenance for the parking lots, Ocean Boulevard, the public restrooms, the Carter Shuttle that we started a couple of years ago. You all recall, council approved about eight to ten thousand dollars a year, so to ensure that the service for riders is free, as an incentive for folks off-island to use this, this service. That is covered through the hospitality tax fund, and the, the reason we justify it is that shuttle stops at Fourteenth Avenue where the restaurants and restaurants are available. And in addition to that, and this is not an exhaustive list, that, that, everything that's covered through the hospitality tax fund, you can look in, in the city's budget in detail. But also personnel. Hospitality tax fund covers the cost of two police officers, a livability officer, two firefighters, and half of a fire inspector, and the total cost of a city L driver. So hopefully this gives you an idea of, of the current expenses that the city covers with the hospitality tax fund. Understand that this is paid by the, the restaurants that are on the island, but it is already covering a lot of the city operations that, that impact, that impact positively, impact their business. So some action, action item and next, yes, ma'am?
Just out of curiosity, on this slide here, do those services that are covered by the hospitality tax, does that, does that take up the entire one point three million dollar income budget now?
Uh, the majority of it.
Okay.
Yes, it also covers debt service for one of the large trucks, I believe. So there's, this is not an exhaustive list.
Okay, but, so it's all allocated to ongoing, those are ongoing projects. It's not one of a one-time purchases or something like that?
That's correct.
So none of that fund would be available for increased garbage collection?
Um, I don't have my little tabs, so please...
Well, if it's too complicated, we can move on.
Um, I can, I can, so yeah, so we are anticipating one point three million, and total expenses are about a million. So there's a, there's a, no, actually, no. We're, we're, in FY25, we are using about half a million from fund balance to cover, to cover the operational expenses. So there is no, there's a...
The transfers between the funds.
Correct.
We got to account for that as well.
That also includes the transfers in from the hospitality...
It's one point three plus.
Okay.
Correct. And that covers the transfers in from the hospitality tax fund to the general fund to cover those, that list of personnel. All right. Anything else? Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I think, if, I'm not speaking for her, but if I heard her correctly, she was laying, uh, I think the point was, are there any funds left in ATAX to cover this increase in garbage, in the, in the collection?
We have an ending fund balance in FY25 of...
Because this came about after the budget was improved.
Yes, sir.
You said ATAX.
But this, this one was hospitality.
Hospitality, I'm just wondering, yeah.
That's right.
Is there anything left in hospitality? I have ATAX or another note?
Well, we have a fund balance in ATAX.
Well, let's go on to the next. The slide was addressing hospitality tax.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant.
And that's what I was asking about.
Uh, we would need to look at the fund balance and look how much we have. We're ending the, I believe in FY25, we're ending at a little over a million.
Yeah, I think you've got about a million two moving through. That's in the fund balance right now.
That'd be the fund balance.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. I see what you mean. Thank you.
Um, so the, we presented these, the current, the current situation and some options to the Public Services and Facilities Committee a couple of weeks ago, and they recommending the city extending a six-month agreement with our existing provider to ensure the continuity of service and, and give the city some time to decide for, on a policy moving forward, recognizing that the city has been doing it for thirty, thirty-five plus years, that if we were going to, if we were to change that path, that we give the businesses enough time to, to transition. And we recognize certainly sensitive to high costs that the, the businesses are experiencing. I know that a lot of them got hit pretty hard last year on some alcohol insurance that, that was unexpected. But equally, our, the city's costs have, are continuing to go up. When you look at the personnel costs alone, public safety personnel received early this year, on average, a fourteen percent increase in wage adjustments to make sure that we maintain competitiveness, seven percent. So all of the city's costs are continuing to go up. And part of the reason why we, we're bringing this before you all, this has been discussed in the past, and I think it may be at seventy thousand dollars, folks didn't feel like, you know, it was warranted to change path. But I think that a cost of, oh, you know, a quarter of a million dollars, I think it should provide an opportunity for us to evaluate, recognizing too, that we're very unique. We, we haven't found a municipality that covers this cost for commercial businesses, with the exception of some communities that do have in-staff, their, their onsite crews, and they add, they have an additional route. So that means they have another truck, another staff that runs a five-day collection route for businesses. And that's just something that we can do with our current personnel and current equipment. So the six months, having the conversation with the, with the Public Services and Facilities, the six months would allow for a transition if the city wanted to forego paying for garbage collection for businesses. I think it would be a pretty generous transition period. Certainly can go more than that. But the two options that we received from our existing provider was a six-month extension or a twelve-month exception, extension. We also have bids, we have received bids from current vendors that, that provide this service, so that we understand what the cost would be for the city if we were to continue to do the service as we have been. You're looking at about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year, or just do the condominiums, which would be about ninety-eight thousand dollars a year. That was a lot, I know. Are there any questions?
Jimmy? A ton. Okay, so we have been spending seventy-five?
Uh, correct. And that includes condominiums and businesses.
Okay. So you subtract that for, in this case, I notice there's two different scenarios here. There's, there's, there's six months, and then there's, they're talking about a five-year contract that was discussed a little bit later?
Um, so that's not on the agenda yet. Now is to, to ensure that our current contractor doesn't pack up and leave.
Yeah.
We need to secure that.
Okay.
And the shorter, the short-term option that we receive is six months. We have received bids so that we can enter into a new contract, and it could be a three-year contract with a two-year extension, that would be up to us, with a new vendor, with a lower bid after these six months.
So, but the seventy-five that we were collecting, that would go to this one seventy-seven?
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
We're out one oh-two.
Yes, sir.
So, um, how much is the increase, the new rate increase for the compactor?
It's the same. It went up four times.
It went up four times?
Yes, sir. We went from seventy-five cents to three dollars.
Okay.
Roughly four times.
So I've got, you know, overall questions why ATAX is not picking up a larger share of this than H tax, I'm telling you, tax, is paying for all, all of this stuff. And that, that's something for another date, another budget.
Yeah, I agree.
But that needs some, some heavy discussion on that. But that needs some heavy discussion on that. My main underlying question, I brought this up last month, is what happened to get us in this position? Do we have anyone in the finance department at all, or anyone in purchasing, that is responsible for reviewing all of the city's contracts? And knowing when the contract expires or when it comes, do what's going to happen on the renewal date? Do we get an extension? What do, we have somebody that has a checklist that goes down, and we know where we are on every single contract with the city. If so, we've been going month to month, is my understanding, we've been going month to month since COVID on this, is that correct?
Correct, and that's what happened. That contract expired during that time, and we, it was just one of those things that's fell through the cracks.
It fell through the cracks?
Yes, and I take full responsibility for that. Ultimately, I'm the purchasing agent of the city.
Well, I'm not interested in pointing fingers.
No, I'll take-
I just want to know what happened.
But the other piece is, this company got bought.
Right, I understand that.
Correct, and we had a really great rate, and it was being honored month to month, and we had no issues with the collection.
Right.
After COVID, we started having some issues with the collection, and we felt, this gives us an opportunity to rebid it and make sure that, you know, all the dumpsters are being collected at the frequency that they need to. But I think just because it was a good rate, it fell through the cracks.
Yeah, I understand.
That's on me.
I understand, no problem. Just want to know what happened, but the underlying factor, and then I'll let other people ask questions if they have any, is these businesses, they have budgets, like we have budgets, and they have, things are pretty tight, and they're pretty allocated, especially in food and beverage this year. Payroll is extremely high. Cost of goods, I mean, my brother had a restaurant in Florida for 14 years, right on the water, called Ward's Landing, and I know what he went through then. I'm glad he's retired and out of it. But I know friends in the restaurant business, and their costs are just skyrocketing. It's not 14%, like you mentioned, or 7%. Some of these insurance costs are well, well, well above 100% that he's got caught. And I'm just trying to lessen the blow of the restaurants and the businesses and the condominiums, everybody involved, when they're looking at a budget, I said, wait a minute, we didn't know this was happening, and we really have a lot of questions, you know, because they're not budgeted for it. And it's a major blow to a small business.
I understand, yeah.
Jan, you have a question?
And that's, so the same thing happened to us. I mean, we budgeted for $75,000 of a contract, and we would be looking at $254,000. You know, there is another, there is another option. We can extend with our current provider for 12 months at $3 per yard, if the city council is of a mind to give them more time to transition. What I would, I mean, I think we all recognize the challenges that our business, it is not an unusual expense that businesses have to pay. You know, if you look, if you compare a business on Sullivan's Island, they're paying their garbage collection fee and their service fee. I think the city has been generous for over 35 years, but at this rate, I just think it's something that the city has to, should consider passing on to the businesses.
Well, I'm going to defer, I'd like to hear from other councilmembers, what they think, their thoughts on the situation. I thought it was extremely curious that we're paying for the post office.
I thought so, too. We're paying for Charleston County.
Charleston County Park and the US Post Office.
Charleston County Park, we're paying for Wild Dunes, almost, it would be almost $7,000 a month.
Circle K.
Circle K.
I mean, it's not, it's not just small businesses.
But the government entities will kind of leap out at me on this.
That is pretty interesting.
I do.
Elizabeth?
Yeah. I mean, I think that the committee's recommendation, we should look hard at passing. I think six months to figure out, I mean, six months to figure out what we want to do going forward. It isn't necessarily that we're, you know, we may end up in a five-year contract and paying for all of it if we can figure it out in that time. But, I mean, everybody's costs are going up, and I just, I like the idea of entering in, locking down a rate, and letting the committee figure out how it is we want to move forward at the end of that.
And I would say, just for knowledge, if we are changing, and I don't know if I said it earlier, but if we are changing vendors, there is a transition period between our current vendor and a new one, where the dumpsters need to be removed by the current vendor and new ones placed. And sometimes these companies have to order, and they may not be readily available. So we think there's about minimum three months of notice that we would need to give to a new vendor, which the six months will give you time to do that and discuss the path forward.
John?
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm trying to do, summarize where we are. I think we understand the history and the rate increases and that. Now we're looking at a path forward, and I think the option is, if I'm correct, I'm summarizing, but we can, we should, we really need to extend the current contract with the current provider to, because a new provider can't come in and take over tomorrow. As you just mentioned, there's a transition period of at least three months. So the question is, do we extend six months or 12 months with the current vendor? But behind that, there's also a policy change that needs to be, have some thought in, and probably some interaction with the business community. And so my thoughts are, we should go six months and kick this back to the Facilities Committee to come forward with the recommendation on what the policy change should be and interact with the businesses and developing that. So over the next couple of months, we have a new policy in place, we have the current extended till the end of the year for the new vendor then to take over in January, or six months, February.
And that was the recommendation of the committee?
Yeah.
And can I?
Scott, sorry.
Yeah, just, and I just, I think, Desiree, we've talked a little bit, but you probably need the policy decision quicker than six months.
Correct.
I think six months is also, you know, ample time for transition, but I think, you know, if we can get Rod or somebody from the Chamber of Commerce come in to talk to us and have those conversations on how we do this, I think we peel this onion back a little more, and we find that we, there might be a lesser impact to some than we may have thought before. We can decide whether we want to cover the condos, because I think, you know, I've been told, I think that we kind of encourage them to go to the dumpsters to begin with, so we may keep the condos going. But I think that policy decision probably needs to be packaged up for some one or two options to present to council probably at the next month's meeting.
And I have met with Rod, the Chamber President, and appreciate, you know, the chamber being a vessel for communication for the businesses. So that's our intent, to continue to communicate through them, to our businesses, ask any questions. Some folks have come to me asking for detail of the exhibit, happy to do that, but I think it's so beneficial to have a main point of contact that we can, that we can share information with.
Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. I see this as two different issues that we're trying to squish into. One, the first issue is, as a government, do we need to ensure that we can collect the trash on the island? Let's deal with that first. And then second, once that's taken care of, who's going to pay for it? If we have available to us $250,000 a year contract for three years and a two-year extension, so we're tied in at $250,000 a year, which is, as I understand, a pretty good price. If we're already paying $75,000 a year from the Hospitality Tax, that lessens that number. If we apply 40% of the 250 to residential, which is what we're dealing with, and 60% to commercial, we come down to of the $250,000, 150's for businesses and 100,000's for residents. If we then take 60% of the 75,000 we're already paying, and apply that to the 150 for businesses, we're really talking about $100,000 a year difference from what, from, that we need to figure out who's going to pay for that. So from my perspective, I think we ought to move forward at the 250 contract, get that in as soon as we can, and then let's spend the next six months and figure out how we're going to cover the 100 grand. That seems to me to make more sense so that we have continuity of service on the island, and we are supporting our businesses, and then we create the dialogue with the businesses that they're very interested in doing, there are some here tonight. And let's figure out how to cover the $100,000.
Blair, can you please explain how going from 288 from 75 is 100,000? I'm lost on that math.
We got a contract, we have the opportunity to do a contract for $250,000 per year.
Correct.
We know, actually, we have a contract to, we have an opportunity to contract at a rate per cubic yard. That amount's going to vary depending upon how much we pick up and how much we decide not to pick up.
That's correct, but based on our, what our current amount is, our current volume is, it's $250,000 a year. If you take that, that $250,000 a year and apportion 60% to businesses, that's 150 grand. If you then take that 150 grand that is paid for, for businesses, and take 60% of the 75 we're currently paying, we're down to 100. If you put the whole 75 on there, we're down to 75,000. But we're only talking about $100,000 here in extra money, because we have to collect the trash for the residents anyway.
Sounds like some Chinese math to me.
No, it's not Chinese math, it's very simple. It's basically all trying to make it way too complicated and say, no, we just got to push it all off.
You're pretending like we're not going to pay for the residential.
No, no, I'm not pretending. I'm saying that we have to pay for residential anyway, because it's built into their taxes.
Procedure, are we allowed to even entertain that? I mean, the agenda item is consideration of a six-month extension. Can we go down this?
Correct, I mean, the agenda includes a recommendation from the committee.
What was the vote on the committee?
Two to one.
It was two to one, it was not a unanimous.
It was not unanimous?
Nothing to one was.
Sorry, Blair.
Just kidding. I think, Elizabeth, to your point, one conversation going on here. Elizabeth, to your point, could we, you know, we have to deal with this, it's on the agenda, obviously.
I think so.
I mean, you could, somebody could, we could vote and add another item and take it down a path. So just in that vein, a little bit to Blair's comment, kind of walk through, I mean, we have to extend with our current provider regardless.
Correct.
If we went down Blair's path, signed a cheaper contract from the preferred vendor we would like to use, we've got to do an extension regardless.
That's right.
And it sounds like they've only come back with a six-month extension, not a two months, not a three months, not whatever. So either way, we're in a six-month extension with our current provider.
Yes, sir.
And Blair, I get your math.
Or we can go month to month, and that's the option. It's more risky.
I don't think so.
No, that is a risk that I'm not willing to take, just to ensure continuity of services and the garbage is collected.
So I'm just trying to, I got it for a second, okay. So I'm just trying to make sure we understand, we don't have a miss. I get your math, totally get the math. Regardless of our path tonight, we need to sign a six-month contract to get over the hump. We can, at the same time, decide we're going to enter into a three-year contract with this cheaper bid that we have in front of us, but regardless, we need to sign a six-month contract.
Correct, the six months would give council, or in the committee, the opportunity to flush out what do we want to do after those six months? Is it the same? Is it a cost share? Is it nothing or all? That is, I think, the path that was recommended.
Jimmy?
Just one quick question, I'm sorry. Is there a drop dead date on this thing? Because it's still a little confusing to some people. I mean, do we have to enter into this extension tonight?
Yes, sir.
We have to?
Yes. The risk is having our current provider say, we are leaving August 1st, knowing that they don't have anything.
Longer term.
Correct, so six months was the shortest, the shortest option that was provided to us to ensure continuity of service.
So they were gracious enough to give us till tonight?
Do we need to make a?
They're givers.
Yeah, we've been doing-
Just want to make sure we got discussion out first. I mean, this is, Elizabeth, you have something else?
Not anymore, I think I'm good. I'm ready.
Yeah, so again, just, the options are in front of us. Blair, I totally get your math. I don't disagree that we should, you know, the committee can decide what's coming back to council, but, I mean, the 250 price is very attractive, but we can't enter into that tonight regardless. So that's kind of off the table, but it's kicked back KADL's committee to take up and run with it.
Scott, sorry.
I'd just like to make the motion to approve the six-month extension.
Second.
Are there questions, comments?
Thoughts?
Desiree, anything else?
I think I said enough.
Where's Donnie? Oh, Donnie's still here. Donnie, you got anything to add?
Well, I just clarified, the current vendor-
Come on up, sorry. Put you on the spot.
And I think, Desiree, the current vendor has opportunity for the containers that you see around this island, to move them off the island by August 1st. That's why, and I think that was said in an email to us, we've got places to put them, you got to get this contract in place, and that's kind of why, maybe I said too much, but he pretty much gave us an ultimatum.
And I think-
That's for me.
Yeah.
What he said, not what these guys said.
You know, I think, sorry.
I'm joking, Jim.
Yeah, I think, Jimmy, to your point, I mean, there's never a good time to shift cost somewhere else, and I have a real soft spot for, I mean, my brother owns a number of restaurants, too, and just, you know, the wage and this and that, and what our state legislature has done with our insurance liability is ridiculous. I mean, and what these guys are having to pay for premiums and, if you can even find a provider to some extent, to cover your liquor liability license. You know, sat in a session on Saturday in Greenville with a senator that committed to have the tort reform bigger, broader conversation, you know, when they go back into session in January, believe it when I see it. And it's not going to take effect for somebody getting insurance for a few years. I mean, that's going to take a while for that to take hold. So, I mean, I feel for, our hospitality tax is through the roof. You guys are knocking the lights out, but I know your costs on the other side of that are skyrocketing right with it. So I'm hopeful this council and our committee will come back with a nice compromise position when we get there. But we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nicole, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next item, all but one came through public safety already, and these are all budgeted items. First one is discussion and consideration of approval of replacement of three patrol vehicles for the police department. You can see where those are budgeted. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Germit, since C and D are pretty much, we talked about this before in a work session, would you consider combining those in one motion?
Sure. C is discussion and consideration of approval of TASER upgrade, five-year subscription, year one cost not to exceed $18,171. You can see where that's budgeted. D is discussion and consideration of approval of drone hardware and eight-year software subscription, year one cost not to exceed $23,000. You can see where that's budgeted from.
Motion approved, C and D.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item E, discussion and consideration of issuing a letter of intent for purchase replacement of 2,003 95-foot ladder truck in fiscal '27. You can see the parenthetical there, there's an 18 to 21-month lead time for construction in the amount of $2.225 million.
Motion to approve, issuing the letter of intent.
Second.
Question, Desiree, I'm running through it, I know this has been through committee, so.
Yes, recommended by the committee, this is included in our FY '27 forecast budget in assuming a debt issue, a municipal lease for the payment of this truck. We would be issuing the letter of intent, which starts the manufacturing of said truck.
Yeah, and tonight, we're not voting on taking on a debt issue, we're just, to your point, letter of intent.
Correct, and it helps us secure the price at that rate.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, discussion and consideration of soil source contract with Schindler for elevator replacement and fire station two in the amount not to exceed $68,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? This just hit its age, Desiree?
Yes, the, as you know, the fire station at 41st Avenue oftentimes can be impacted by flooding from 41st Avenue Outfall, which we just fixed. I know, we're so excited. But at the last nor'easter and another storm, there was some water that made it into the cavity. cavity, I think it's called, the, of where the, um, elevator is, and it needs replacement, so it's included in the budget. It incl- um, in addition to this, there's another phase that I've already approved, which is some waterproofing, um, but because this exceeds, um, 25,000, even though it's included in the budget, it would require an, a vote of council.
Didn't we get some funding for this, though? Didn't we get some funding for, because of the water damage?
Um, maybe some insurance proceeds, but I, I, I would need to, I would need to check.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, I know also discussed with public safety is discussion of fire department restructuring proposal for command staff, I know Chief O is not here, we've got some folks with this, but Desiree?
Yeah, so the, your packet includes a pretty detailed memo that the chief proposed to me, and we discussed and presented to the committee. It, it, it's trying to take an opportunity, um, due to the upcoming retirement of our deputy, uh, chief, I know Hathaway has some nerve, um, so retired.
Working all these years with us and anyone's to leave.
I know. Um, and it, it really is an effort to enhance our department's effectiveness in handling our current demands. As you know, the fire department most recently, um, added the paramedic program and the ALS, which went live yesterday, and, um, the team, um, heroically saved a life last night. Um, the, um, it, the proposal does not include, um, adding a position to our command staff, it would be reclassifying the existing battalion chief for training, uh, into a director, uh, deputy chief of special operations, and they would be overseeing specifically marine unit, water rescues, and EMS. They would be directly supervising our medical control officer, which we're required to have as part of the paramedic program, and just, you know, we feel like the department is, um, becoming more professional and sophisticated, that we, we believe this, this command structure would be, um, successful. Um, two, a, a new job description has been developed, and we'll be presenting that for approval to the administration committee at their meeting August 1st.
Thank you. This, obviously, it does not require council approval, just an update. Questions for Desiree or any of the fire staff that's here? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Next item, boards and commission reports, board of zoning appeals, minutes are attached, planning commission, no meeting in July, accommodations, tax advisory committee, no meeting in July, and environmental advisory committee, minutes are attached. Ordinances, resolutions, and petitions, second reading, ordinance 2024-03, ordinance to amend section 5 dash 4 dash 128 temporary signs and section 5 dash 4 dash 141 prohibited signs. Desiree, has there been a change since our first reading? Do you mind touching on that before we take action?
Yes, um, the, the changes include, so the committee, when this was recommended, the prohibition on, uh, or the, the conditions that were, um, included for the placement of political signs in the public right-of-way, which was certain size and certain time, uh, when they could be out on the public right-of-way, were, um, applied to private property for the placement of those signs, which would have been more restrictive than the current regulations that we have for signs that are non-commercial on private property. So went back to the planning commission, they reviewed it and they, they caught that, and they wanted to understand whether or not that was the intent of this ordinance. We brought that before workshop, before, uh, city council, workshop discussed it and decided that that was not the intent, so we just went ahead and, um, made those changes to the existing version you have in front of you, which would essentially, um, prohibit any, any sign on any public right-of-way. So political signs would be, um, um, available for people to place on private property as long as they meet those requirements, which are currently in the code, can't be more than eight square feet of size, um, and would make us, uh, consistent with, um, state law and also with, like I said during the public hearing, with a Supreme Court ruling that would prevent municipalities from regulating, uh, placement of signs, uh, based on content.
Thank you. So this, I need a motion to approve as amended.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Second. Questions, thoughts, discussion? Jimmy?
I just think, uh, it's, um, unintended, but it's gonna hurt the little guys trying to break in and, um, trying to run an independent campaign by himself, he doesn't know a whole lot of people, he or she, and no, I thought originally it was a good idea, but I don't anymore. I think, uh, it should be easy to run for city council, I think this will, um, could hurt potential new candidates.
I mean, I, I think our current ordinance is in conflict with state law, I'm not certain we have much of a choice.
Correct.
Except.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, who's the other person?
Ashley. Ashley and Jimmy. Next item is ordinance 2024-05, an ordinance to amend section 5 dash 4 dash 12 and 5 dash 4 dash 13, and establish stormwater management requirements for new construction in SR 1, 2, and 3, and to allow properties to be elevated up to 7.4 feet in elevation with the approval of a plan certifying that the most, that the post-construction stormwater pattern will result in the same or less runoff than the pre-construction stormwater pattern. Desiree, same issue here, we've had a change since, um, first reading, or Douglas, do you mind just touching on that before we take action?
Yes.
Um, the change, or you, just the change?
Just the change.
Okay, the, um, the planning commission recommended that pools be not counted in the trigger for, uh, drainage plan, the thought, their thought was those pools generally are capturing water, so they shouldn't be treated as impervious surfacing. Uh, the committee felt like, while they do sometimes capture water, they can also overflow, and they definitely are not pervious, so they felt like that was, um, that it would be better to leave it as it currently, um, is administered whereby pools are counted in triggering stormwater management plans and the requirement of those. So that's the, that is the amendment.
Thank you.
The change.
Got a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
Second.
Second. Are there questions, there's discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. First reading, ordinance 2024 dash 06, typically, we would do these by title only, but I'd make a motion to suspend the rules of order to have a discussion on this ordinance before we take any action.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Desiree, you wanna?
Yes.
Add some background here.
Absolutely. Um, so this ordinance was presented for discussion at the public safety meeting last week, and it came as a result of some resident concerns that we started hearing earlier this year when the coyote situation was sort of out of hand, and we were seeing a lot of, um, encounters and sightings, and one of the things, and part of the conversations that the chief has had with DNR, um, that was identified as an unintended consequence was people intentionally leaving food out to feed raccoons or, or other wildlife, was really encouraging activity of coyotes in, in the area. Um, in addition to that, we have heard, um, from a, uh, I know of a couple residents that are having problems with neighbors intentionally feeding raccoons, and their concerns about public safety because of raccoons defecating in their, um, in their yard, and some of the diseases that that may bring, and our inability to address that, um, because there was no, um, section of the code that would allow our police department to, um, other than actively encourage people to stop doing it, there was nothing that, um, would, would allow us to require that, that activity to, to, to be stopped. So Chief Cornet developed, drafted this ordinance based on similar ordinances from other, from other communities, and was presented, we discussed it, and essentially, what this ordinance would do is prohibit the intentional or unintentional feeding of wildlife, and wildlife is defined by the, by the ordinance, um, I'm trying to pull it up, quick second. Wildlife, yes, oh, sorry. Wildlife is defined as animals that have not been domesticated or tamed, and usually live in a natural environment, both game, including both game and non-game species, such as deer, coyotes, possums, raccoons, skunks, and waterfowl. And waterfowl is defined as any bird that frequents the water, aquatic fowl, including but not limited to ducks, geese, swans, herons, and egrets. Um, there was a question that was raised at the public safety committee about, um, feral cats, whether or not they would be included in this ordinance. Um, we've looked at some definitions from the county, and feral cats are defined as domesticated animals, so they would not be, um, included here as a prohibition to feed them. If the city wanted to prohibit the feeding of feral cats, it would require an amendment to this ordinance, and if the intent is to not prohibit the feeding, um, of feral cats, we can include some clarification language that feral cats are considered domesticated animals or are not included in the ordinance.
When it comes back for second reading.
Yeah, so this, after first reading, if approved by title only, it goes back to the committee, the committee will have an opportunity to take another stab at it, will present it to you all again at a workshop for more work before it's presented for second reading.
Okay.
Are we having discussion?
Yes. Right now, far away.
Um, I just, uh, this is something that I think I was, uh, one of the first people that actually, uh, had the pleasure of bringing this up regarding, uh, raccoons pooping on people's porches. Um, and when I first did that, I just did a quick little Google search and found all of the reasons why you should not feed wild animals. Um, it is bad for the animals themselves, let's just take away the disgustingness of having to clean up raccoon poop. Um, it's bad for the animals because they don't learn to forage their own food, their babies don't learn to find and kill and forage their own food, they become accustomed to humans and not afraid of them. It encourages disease in the animal population. We had a whole bunch of raccoons come down with this temper on Forest Trail a couple of years ago. It might have something to do with the fact that they were all eating together, um, they're more likely to get diseases. Um, the list goes on and on and on for reasons why you should not feed wild animals, um, and I think this is definitely something that we need in our code. It's crazy that it's not there to begin with, um, but maybe they thought that people didn't need this. Um, but yes, I, I would strongly encourage everybody to vote for this, and, um, the feral cat issue is, is a different, is a whole nother, uh, story, and I think it's probably something that maybe the environmental committee could, could take on with the wildlife and, cause I know Charleston County does a great job with, um, helping with trapping and, um, spaying, neutering, giving shots and all of that, so maybe we can dovetail that into this and encourage, um, you know, a better life for the feral cats that are out here. Um, but yeah, that's.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've got two issues with this. One is, as it's currently written, it also would outlaw bird feeders, because it does not, it says all wild animals, and then it has a such as, which is nothing more than saying animals like these, but it doesn't mean that it's, that it's not inclusive of all wild animals. So, bird feeders would be outlawed. Uh, second is, I think that we're trying to fix something that we already have a remedy for. Uh, under the current city ordinance, we have, um, a nuisance ordinance, and the way it works is that if anybody is doing anything that creates a danger to public health, safety, peace, morals, or decency, they're supposed to be noticed to stop. If they don't stop, then the next stage is that a, um, action is brought by the city against the individual, and it goes to our municipal court. They can be fined up to $500 or put in jail for up to 30 days. So, if we've got somebody feeding raccoons, and that is creating a public nuisance, let's use the ordinance that we have and stop it, and let's allow me to keep my bird feeder.
Now we get to the heart of the issue.
I will, uh, I will say, we discussed that bird feeder issue in the committee, and I think it was determined by chief that, based on the language, it did not apply to bird feeders, and I'll let you comment on it, chief, but if, if it's a question I suggest we add, uh, because it wasn't the intent, uh, to, to prohibit the feeding of birds. So if we need to clarify that, then we should put it back in.
Jimmy?
And also, you have your opinion?
Yeah, it should be, if it needs to be clarified, it needs to be in the ordinance, word for word, and, uh, I'm glad it's going by the committee, I'm against it, prohibits the feeding of deer. Um, and I don't know what y'all have against deer, but, um, they were here a long time before we were, and, um, I don't see as where they're a nuisance, they're, I mean, I've, I've talked to several people today, and you don't hear from them, but I'm, I believe that you will. There will probably be some resistance to this, and I totally agree with Blair that we already have ordinance in place to deal with nuisances.
I guess Mac or chief, if you wanna speak to why we felt to tie it down in a new ordinance as opposed to, uh, tweaking an existing. Chief, thank you. You try to sit on the back row every meeting, don't you, pal?
He's providing security.
Good Southern Baptist sits in the back. The reason we chose to move it this, I don't feel comfortable that charging for feeding raccoons falls under the public nuisance ordinance as it's written. Um, I wouldn't feel comfortable making that charge and bringing it here, I don't feel that it meets the definition or the ordinance as it's outlined, and so I think when you have something that's a little more well-defined, it's easier to defend in court when you make that charge. Uh, and I did also agree with the bird feeder, uh, it was, the spirit was never to outlaw somebody from feeding wild birds, we do it at our house. Um, it would be something, I think we would wanna add the language in there that says, hey, you, this does not apply to feeding normal birds. But what we don't want is people feeding waterfowl, as it's defined in here, because they have a purpose, and they eat the way they do, and they do the things they do, wild animals do, to protect our community and to protect themselves and keep from interacting with humans, um, and keep those diseases away from us. It's, as councilperson Meyer stated, it is just as much to keep those animals safe as it is to keep people safe and to reduce interactions between humans and wild animals, which was something when I met with USDA, they highly recommended when we talked about coyotes and trying to keep that interaction between humans and coyotes down. One way that they recommended that was to reduce feeding of wild animals that can be seen as a prey, that that in, that a coyote might come and attack within the residential community or a place where people gather.
Chief, if, if I may, I, I was told today that James Island has enacted a similar ordinance, and it is now devolved into residents calling each other out, neighbors calling each other out if they see wild animals in another neighbor's yard. How are you going to?
Yeah.
Prove up who's feeding what to whom, so that, so that, you know, that would be stopped? Because we have wild animals all over the island, man, I, I got them all over my yard every day, so, so, but, I mean, I'm also concerned, there's a potential issue here that we faced with the noise ordinance of turning neighbors against each other in this situation.
Where, where was that?
James Island.
It's also Antigua Kay, that's happening there too.
Residents already call about it, this is not anything new, it's something we've been getting calls about. How we would, I've made this charge before in my previous municipality. When you see that they're feeding an animal, which you can see, they're placing food out in dishes or in containers for that wild animal, that, that's how you make the charge. I've done it, I've successfully prosecuted this type of charge.
Thank you.
Yep. This is first reading, so we'll go back to committee, so, yeah, we don't have a motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve.
Yeah.
No.
We went straight to discussion.
So I make a motion that we approve, uh, first reading?
Second.
Do we, do we wanna have a, a, um, amendment for the bird feeders?
No.
No, we'll do that at the committee.
Oh, okay.
Jan, I'm sorry, did you have a comment? Jan?
No, that's all right. Take it up in committee.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nicole, are you good?
Yes, sir.
All right. Last item, emergency ordinance 2024 dash 03, an emergency ordinance to allow property owners near breach inlet to install revetment slash seawall for emergency erosion control. Just have some discussion before we get there. You recall, in February, we passed a similar ordinance with a little bit different language on the, around the engineering in February to allow residents in the affected area to build a structure. build a structure. No one did or was able to based on either engineer requirement or the OCRM markings. A few residents, as you heard tonight, appealed to the Board of OCRM, which outlined some parameters that the residents needed to complete, and then OCRM would revisit it in 60 to 90 days to re-mark the area. Since the Army Corps project, as you heard tonight, probably at best is October 1st as we sit here today, I felt that we needed to at least have the conversation about allowing an owner, if they want to build some type of structure as approved in our ordinance, to at least have that conversation again, given that we've had this delay. Douglas, Desiree, anything to add before we?
If you all want to, we can walk through the emergency ordinance. I know it's been a couple months.
Yeah.
Douglas, thank you.
So, I think first off, the wherethes were from the old ordinance. We just copied and pasted it. And I think those, I think legal staff has looked at that and felt like those should be updated to be more current than they are. Also, since the last time you all saw this ordinance, OCRM's name has changed, so that would need to be amended throughout. So, those kind of at a high level would need to take place. And I'll just kind of go through the process that this would, that an owner would go through and the various requirements that they would need to comply with. First of all, this ordinance only would pertain to those properties between 100 and 914 Ocean Boulevard, so it wouldn't, would not apply in other areas. The wall, and it was talked about the requirement for an engineer's statement, the wall would still have to be designed by an engineer or the revetment. So that is still in there, but the requirement for that statement that we talked about has been removed and replaced by a, the requirement for the owner to provide a hold harmless agreement that would be drafted by the city's legal staff and entered into protecting the city in the event of damage by the wall or lawsuits from the wall. The wall would still have to be entirely landward of, and I'm going to call them BCM, the old OCRM. That requirement is obviously still in there whereby they would go through a process and have BCM mark physically on the ground, their jurisdiction, and then also generate an exhibit that they could submit to our offices showing where their jurisdictional boundaries are. This wall, the excavation and access to build the wall would all, would all have to happen landward of their jurisdiction. The way, there's a carryover in here from the original ordinance that would say that the wall can go no farther seaward than 20 feet seaward of the maximum building line in those areas. That line is, it was kind of the straightest line that the, that the council at the time could come up with. We talked about different scenarios, ultimately decided that that was the kind of closest thing to a straight and continuous line. So that is also carried over into this emergency ordinance. Wall could be no taller than 10 feet above the engineering standard that they use today, the NAVD 88 standard. Says 10 feet, but in your mind's eye, that's above, that's kind of above sea level. So that probably translates to 18 inches, two feet above the ground as it sits out there. In times when the wall is not, not protecting from erosion, so outside of erosional events, the walls would have to be completely covered with sand. And I think that that's, that's the, that's the bulk of the ordinance. In summary, the only other part is, again, because it's emergency ordinance, it would be, it would only open this window for 60 days from, from the date that you were to enact it.
And that would be for the permit. Construction would not need to be completed within those 60 days, but the issuance of a permit.
That's correct. They would need to be through their submittal process and have permit in hand within that 60-day window.
Mac, anything to add from your view?
The only other thing from a legal standpoint is this would require a two-thirds vote of council, just because of the emergency nature of it.
And Mac, I know you updated today the wherethes clause. Would they need to approve that as amended per legal counsel?
Yeah, ultimately, if y'all want to approve this, I think you would want to make a motion to approve it as amended to change OCRM's name and update the wherethes clauses. And frankly, we probably want to update the wherethes clauses for the action that y'all took earlier at this meeting with the sandbags, too, just to outline everything leading up to this and what the city's done, including the actions tonight.
Questions, comments? Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't support this, and there's two main reasons. One is, it applies to just a very small number of residents and not to everybody. If we're going to do something, then allow everybody to do it and not just a small group. The second issue, which I think is more important than that, is we as a government are charged with protecting the residents to a reasonable degree. We can't protect some residents to the potential detriment of others. And we had in the original ordinance language that took care of that because an engineer would certify that the wall would not hurt neighboring properties. And no engineer would do that. Because we all know that a wall will, in fact, hurt neighboring properties in an erosional event, because you have the backwash on both sides. And so I can't support giving protection to one resident at the expense of the neighboring residents.
May I? Yes. So, I guess, gosh, this is probably the 12th time I've read this ordinance. And this morning, I had a bit of an epiphany, I think. I'm not sure, but it occurred to me as I got down to the bottom of the first page, that the issue we have is with the zoning ordinance. It's the 250-foot line, and it's the prohibition against building of seawalls. And in our zoning code, we have a process through which property owners who feel like they are suffering a hardship are able to go and make an appeal, and it goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I'm, just from a strictly procedural standpoint, I'm starting to wonder if this is the way we should be entertaining this. To me, as a prior member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I'm a little embarrassed to say that it didn't occur to me before now, but it seems like we're effectively running an in-run around the Board of Zoning Appeals and that entire process that a homeowner is entitled to. It feels like kind of an emergency temporary variance request, and those are kind of hard to, hard to give or get. And I just, you know, I think that at a council level, we could be having the discussion about the revocation of the 250-foot line. We could be talking about, you know, whether we, as a community, want to continue to have a prohibition in our zoning code against seawalls. But, you know, I don't, when I kind of backed out and quit looking at the tree and kind of looked at the forest, I'm wondering if procedurally, we're even handling this in an appropriate manner.
Mac, or somebody want to opine on that?
This is in y'all's land development regulations, which has a variance procedure laid out, just a couple sections either before or below this section in the ordinance. I can pull it up and tell you what it is.
You know, the standard kind of thought in zoning and land use regulation is that a variance should not, the Board of Zoning Appeals is a quasi-judicial board. They should not be using that kind of judge, they shouldn't be substituting policy, they shouldn't be creating policy. From my perspective, if the board were to start approving seawalls when seawalls were needed, that would be usurping this group's authority to establish the policy. So I, from my perspective, I think it's squarely a policy decision that would land with this council and not a, kind of more of a judicial question as to whether, you know, they would have to consider if there's something unique about the shape, terrain, topography of the property. Clearly, what's different about them is their eroding. Clearly, when they're, it's in the ordinance, the only time you need an erosion control device is when it's eroding. So I, from my perspective, I think that would be.
But isn't the 250-foot line a building, it's like a building line like any other? It's a setback, it's a front, side, rear, whatever. I mean, that's, that's the issue here, is the 250-foot line.
So they certainly could request it. I mean, I think the, I think there is a, there's clearly a process in the code whereby they could request it. And it would be for them to make the judgment as to whether it met the statute, and maybe it would be improper for me to say now whether I think it's, whether it truly meets that statute and should be granted, it's probably not proper for me to say, but I think their training would advise against me.
Douglas, would you remind, would you mind reviewing what you'd said earlier about the engineer's drawings? Does this require that the engineer sign off on it?
So still has to be designed by an engineer.
And they have to sign it?
They do have to sign it, so we know that it would be a structurally sound, you know, built for the intended purposes that it's being built for. Wouldn't be just haphazardly throwing out rocks or, you know, bricks or broken-up debris. It would be a design-engineered wall. But what has been taken out is that certification statement that it will not be, it will be designed in such a way to not be detrimental to the surrounding neighbors.
Has that been taken out?
That has been taken out.
And replaced with a requirement of a hold harmless agreement with the intent of protecting, the intent is, would be to protect the city in the event that the structure does create some damage to downdrift lots or the neighbor, the city would not be held liable for approving set, set emergency ordinance.
So that's in the approval process, and the homeowner would sign off on that?
Yes, sir.
Correct. We won't issue a permit unless that hold harmless agreement is executed.
Let me get, John, before we leave your issue, follow-up questions for Douglas or Mac?
I don't think, I mean, if Mac agrees, I don't, you know, that's just, I mean, literally had that thought driving in this morning, thinking, are we talking about a build line that we're, that has a different process for appeals? Or are we talking about, you know, is this even an appropriate method to handle this?
I think they're probably still going to run into the same, because we had the language in the ordinance that the engineer will certify it won't cause issues for the downdrift or adjoining lots. The zoning, the variance standard that would apply here says it won't be detrimental to adjacent property or to the public interest. And so we're still back at the same issue as to whether this is going to cause issues to the neighbors, et cetera.
Well, my point to that was, I think we're at this spot because it's not a permanent change, it's an emergency that we're asking for 60 days. That kind of goes around that. But beyond that, I, I'm against it, maybe for similar, maybe different reasons than Blair, but I'm at the same place I was the first time we, this came, this came up. I truly believe that homeowners ought to be responsible for protecting their own properties. And I'd be all for this if we didn't have some arbitrary language in here about 20 feet, that's, it's very arbitrary. We picked 20 feet for what reason? And I think it puts some homeowners in a very difficult position of making a decision to tear out their pool, whether to put a wall in. And I'm just fundamentally against it. I think the city ought to get out of the way. If the state says that they don't have jurisdiction at a point that a homeowner wants to put protection in, they should be allowed to be able to put protection in for their property. And so I'm, I guess I'm against it for a different reason than Blair, but I'm still against it.
Katie?
Yeah, so this, taking out the requirement for the engineer, I think it's interesting that we just passed an ordinance for building up your property that required that an engineer sign off and say that it was not going to cause harm to adjacent property owners. And now we're saying that we are going to pass something that does not have that requirement because we can't find an engineer that will say that it won't cause harm to adjacent property owners. I think that's probably why we should not pass this. I don't, I don't see how we can, like Blair said, I don't see how we can pass something that says that, that not, I mean, most likely will cause harm to some adjacent property owner, wherever the wall ends, it's going to, it's going to have an end to it. And, and then there was, I had something else, but I just forgot. Sorry.
Jimmy?
I got very distracted. Sorry about that.
Okay. Jan, sorry.
I think we get back to, when an engineer signs and seals a drawing, they certify that it has, they followed best engineering practices. And that's what they, what engineers use to certify projects. That's the method. And anything else, they probably couldn't get liability insurance to cover them, so.
And I think that what we've heard from Stephen and what we heard from some of the residents that are, that are, that would like to have the opportunity to do it, are envisioning something like a thin sheet pile that goes right along the structure of the property to help support the integrity of the structure, not a, not a large seawall that would be, that would be visible. And I think in a situation where the erosion is so bad that the water is hitting that sheet pile or that revetment, that alone is also causing damage to that property and neighboring properties. Obviously, the goal is to be in a position where those would be, would not be visible. But just wanted to at least share what we have heard is the intent of some of these folks is to install something that would be so close, and hence the 20 feet, you know, making it close to the structure, that it is intended to, you know, be that, be that sort of last resort of protection for these structures that are, as we saw, under emergency conditions.
And that reminded me of my other point, which was, we just passed another ordinance tonight to allow for the sandbags, which is an emergency. We are doing what, what I think is the most that the city can and should do to protect these homes in an emergency situation. And the city's, council has agreed that the city should pay for it. And that is, you know, it seems to me, looking up and down the coast, you don't see many people putting in seawalls, and you do see a lot of sandbags, and so I'm assuming that it's kind of a best practices. And it is temporary. You know, 40 years from now, we're not, we're not going to have those sandbags, city's going to get rid of them. And 40 years from now, we could very well have these seawalls. And I've seen a lot of negative impacts in Northeast Florida, in particular of seawalls and what they do to beaches and vegetation, so, thank you.
Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. One final point. Our own coastal engineer tonight was talking about backwash at the end of walls and said that if there's a break in the sandbag wall that we've now voted to build, that there will be backwash, which is why we voted to not have that and to go all the way across. Exact same thing's going to happen with seawalls. If one person builds a seawall and somebody else doesn't.
Yeah, you know, my only comment would be, I don't know what the right thing to do is. And I don't think any of us do. We consider all day long and think about backwash, sidewash, whatever wash, but to not, you know, I just, I felt important enough to put it back on the agenda, just to give the few homeowners that fit the parameters, that want to protect their property. I mean, this is a $300,000 to $400,000 expense on their nickel that they are going to do. It's not the seawall that, you know, is a blight on our beach today. It is a subterranean sheet, to your point, and to the citizen's comment point tonight, that you're really not going to see, probably ever, except in extreme category. But again, I don't know that either. But to me, it just felt, I felt like we needed to pull it back up tonight. So Nicole, why don't we do a roll call vote?
Is there a motion on the table?
Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve this emergency ordinance, just to get it to a vote.
Second.
Thank you, Desiree, sorry.
You're welcome. Actually, I missed the whole motion to approve.
I did, second, by Jimmy. Desiree was in your ear, wasn't she?
My fault.
Councilmember Myers?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campson?
Nay.
Councilmember Hahn?
Nay.
Councilmember Pierce?
Nay.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Boghossian?
Aye.
Sorry. Mayor Pounds?
Aye.
Motion fails.
There being no further business?
Rush to it.